I call this meeting to order on Monday, March 18th, 2019. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Bernard McQueen, International Gospel Outreach Church, 1101 Windy Hill Road. Hope somewhere out in the mult... There's in the front row. If he'll come forward, he's going to come forward. Give us our invocation and also lead us in the pledge of the flag. So would everyone please rise?
Thank you Mayor Max and to all the city council officials. Thank you Pastor Robinson, his greetings. And let's pray. Father God, we thank you for your tender mercies which are over all of your works. And Father, you've been so good to all of us. And we ask you, God, that during this meeting, you will allow us to gather our minds and our hearts together as we move the city of Smyrna forward. It is in these times, God, that we... You've gathered the champions of the world together on this one platform. And you've given us insight. You said in your word that "He that walks with wise men shall be wise himself." And Father, I believe that in this company, you have great counsel. And that when our minds come together, Father, we will create a civil union. We will create a civil society, a people of great ability to set the course for many generations to come. We thank you for the guidance of our mayor of this city and all who work to support his vision and the vision of others. We thank you for this time. And we pray, God, that all things will go well. In Jesus' name we pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those folks that are new to town or had never been International Gospel Outreach Church at Windy Hill, go right under the underpass. It's right there on the left. Great church. If you want to visit, I'm sure they'd love to have you. We appreciate it all y'all do for our community. Agenda changes tonight. The only thing that we have, it's under 4A, is an item, a public hearing item that will be tabled until the April 1st, 2019 meeting. Merrill report, we got a couple of three things. Character education presentation from Griffin Middle School. We got somebody here from Griffin. Hope it's not this dancing guy. Let's see. Those folks from Griffin Middle School for Character Education. Yes. You come right up here and get... We're glad to have y'all. Y'all are the first ones that we've done. So I think that's what all these kids are here and parents. Do not be afraid. Where's the Dancing With The Stars guys? Their theme is care of self, care of others, and care of community. And we have started back doing this and we're glad these Griffins here. We got two middle schools in Smyrna and we're very proud of both of them. You want to introduce anybody or?
Okay, I'm Lori Quintana and I am the live... This is Laquincia Brown, who is one of our teachers. And then who is our academic coach. And we were approached or invited to present to you today. And so we brought our students in from our Ladies of Excellence and our Leading Hope Clubs. And they are going to share with you today what it means to have care of self, care of others, and care of community. Our first speaker is Heritage.
Microphone.
Good evening. My name is Heritage Jennerdo and today we are here on behalf of Griffin Middle School and will be speaking on character education. First up is Alon Frady. Next up is Kendall Wright. Next up is Michaela Brown.
I am self-concept. Self-concept is an idea constructed from the beliefs one holds about oneself and the responses of others. It causes us as individuals to ask ourselves who we are. The factors of self-concept are knowledge, personality, physical characteristics, abilities, values, goals, and roles. Self-concept is the image we have of ourselves. Wanting to be someone else is a waste of the person you are. You yourself as anyone else in the entire universe deserve your love and affections. Self-concept teaches us who we are, what makes us unique, and what motivates our actions. Self-concept is important because it helps us to understand why we do things and how our beliefs and behaviors affect us. Self-concept affects us as human beings because it shows us how we compare ourselves to others and how others respond to us. In conclusion, Oprah Winfrey said, and I quote, "As you become more clear about who you really are, you'll be better able to decide what is best for you."
Have one more for worldview.
As influencer of others, we here at Griffin make sure we carry ourselves with pride and integrity. We want to make sure others view us here in the community and look for guidance.
Thank you to our students. We are so proud of you for standing up today and sharing with your community. As teachers, we invest so much every day with our students to lead them and inspire them and to be productive community members. And this is just the beginning for them. So I want to start off by thanking Mayor Bacon and the city council and Kristi Omen, who helped me coordinate all of this for a little over a month. We so appreciate you supporting our schools and our students and educators as well in the Smyrna community. Because as we all know, real-world experiences are what our students need today. And so being able to have this opportunity with y'all today is going to teach them such a valuable lesson. With that in mind, we have programs that we passed out for everybody on the program. One of the skills we really try to teach our students is technology. And there's a technology app called Flipgrid. It allows our students to have the opportunity to interact with you even after today and extend their learning. And so if you scan the QR code on there after you leave today or when you have time later this week, you will be able to see five different videos from the students that presented tonight. And they pose a question for each of you, including our city council and mayor, so that they can learn how to be active and community members and continue their avenue to being leaders as well. I appreciate your time and thank you so much. Mr. Langston, who is the sponsor of our Leading Hope Club, has a video we'd like to share with you so that you can see where our students have already made an impact in our community. And just so you can get firsthand knowledge of what we want to do with our kids in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And maybe they can help us on our audio to also... I apologize for that. And I want to thank the kids. I know y'all worked hard on your... On the word. And I'd just like for... If there's parents or family or friends that are here for Griffin Middle School tonight and these kids, would you stand up? There you go. All right. Thank y'all so much. And we will have y'all back again and we're going to throw away those Radio Shack microphones. But we apologize for that. But thank y'all so much. Oh yeah. Yeah. Oh well, yeah, no. Are you through speaking? You want to speak some more? Yeah, wait a minute. Hold it here. So like Kristi told me she was going to have it down here. Was it thumb drive or something? That's... Kristi did mention that to me this afternoon. Y'all hold on one second. We're like a well-oil machine up here.
Program decided that this Thanksgiving holiday, Christine, they wanted to facilitate a food drive.
Here we go. Anybody see that? Is that excellent? Hey, I know that guy.
To make a difference for the lives of homeless students. So they got together, they had two weeks to do this, and they partnered with Griffin Middle School with their PTSD program to make it happen, Christine. And guess what? They collected over a thousand pounds of food to those that are underprivileged and underserved. I just think that for students to come together and youth to come together and do this is so inspirational and humbling. I mean, I just... I can't be more proud of them.
Yeah. It's really incredible when you think about the fact that they had that short amount of time. They rallied. It just goes to show, we can all do.
Exactly.
When we all just work as a team.
Of course.
And pitch in and make a difference. And again, they're doing it to help others right there in Atlanta.
Exactly. Other students like themselves. It's like Thanksgiving, why can I give back and help at the same time? Why should these other students and this youth, you know, maybe face the point that they may not have a good Thanksgiving meal? So for them, for their hearts, for our youth to come together and do that. Big shout out to y'all. Big congratulations. And just so anybody that wants to support the Leading Hope After School program, please text to give 44-467-2147 or visit theperfectlovefoundation.org for more information about this organization. Program decided that this Thanksgiving holiday, Christine, they wanted to facilitate a food drive to make a difference for the lives of homeless students. So they got together, they had two weeks to do this, and they partnered with Griffin Middle School with their PTSD program to make it happen, Christine. And guess what? They collect...
Thank y'all so much. Adam B. on the Merrill Report and Citizens Police Academy graduating class ceremony presentation of certificates. Mr. Norton, who chairs the Public Safety Committee, I'll ask him to handle that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask the chief to handle it. I'll come up there with you.
This is always a great time. This is actually our seventh graduating class from our Citizens Police Academy. Officer Heather Knight, this was her first class that she headed up this time. I'm going to turn it over to Heather and let her tell you about a lot of the great things that they get to do. Heather?
Just throw that in the garbage can. That don't work.
Test, 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 test.
Hey, guys. Like you said, my name is Officer Knight.
Yeah, that one's not going to work either.
With the Smyrna Police Department. This is our seventh class and my first, as he said. So it's an 11-week program. Shit out to 12, 13, 14 weeks because they just love it so much that they just want to keep coming back and learning more things. Just to highlight a few things that they did, we had the medical examiner of Cobb County come in and they learned how, you know, we... After we process a crime scene, what happens? They went to the shooting range and they got to see all the guns that we have in our stock. And then we had... Oh, we did traffic law. So they got to go out and they got to shoot the laser at cars and work with the... Our step unit, which is our traffic unit. They learned constitutional law. We dove deep into the opioid crisis of Georgia, which was really awesome because they get firsthand knowledge of things that are affecting our community. I'm not going to be too long-winded because I know that they wanted to say a few things. So I'm going to open the floor to them to show... To tell you guys what they went through personally.
Good evening. My name is Aria Marshall. First off, thank you all so much for this class. In my opinion, to me, it's very important for these type of classes because it's very important for police and community relations. So thank you so much to the chief. Thank you so much to our instructors. They were absolutely amazing. We learned so much. We met each other, new friendships. In the class, it's basically, like I say, it's extremely important because a lot of things that we see, we don't really understand until you actually get inside the classroom, you actually speak to them, you actually have the opportunity to engage with them. And you just learn so much that you would not know just off the top of your head. So like I said, thank you to them. It was an amazing class. I wish it wasn't as short as it was, but it was absolutely amazing. And I encourage anybody, any age, really honestly, because I'll be 30 this year and the class was amazing, especially for my generation. It was... It was just an awesome class all around.
It was a really good class in the fact that one of the things that I learned the most was when we went to Marietta and had the simulation of making decisions whether to shoot or not to shoot. That was incredible. I made so many mistakes and I would have been shot all the time. And I think anybody who gets that opportunity to see how police officers have to handle very dangerous and extremely fast-moving program or a situation, that is a key thing. And that was one of the most wonderful experiences I have and also the ride with the officers. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Katina Cunningham. I am a May 2018 graduate of the Citizens Academy. And now that went so wonderfully, I decided to apply for the Citizens Police Academy. Everything these guys have said, some of these guys went through Citizens Academy with me as well. Paula Moon and another one of our compadres who's not here tonight. But I wanted to tell you guys that this is something that's... As we got into it, we became like a family. My children grew up in Smyrna, graduated from Campbell High School. They were part of the ROTC program where they worked with Keep Smyrna Beautiful and served in the community and advocated for the community. So when I came to Citizens Police Academy to have Sergeant Defense and Officer Heather Knight and had a long conversation with Chief Lee, amazing. And I caught him doing a good deed at the post office too. He don't know about it yet. This guy is amazing. This class was amazing. I'd do it over again. Everything that we went through, they dissected. We even went through cases and had... What was it? Superstar Night where Vic Rentals came out and spoke to us. A lot of the essential people, some of the people from Cobb County Police Department, is that correct?
Yes.
But, right. And they just dissected and they took time with us and they respected us. And we got an opportunity, not just as citizens, I'm a business owner in the area as well. We had the opportunity to actually sit down and not just see what we see on TV from the resident perspective. We got to sit down and Heather took us through simulations of what happens from the police perspective. So we had the opportunity to broaden our and be enlightened about not just where we see things from a perspective of the citizen, but also what happens within the city. I encourage any and everybody that is of age that can apply. It's an amazing program to go through. I want to thank Mayor Bacon and the council for allowing something of this nature to be afforded to the citizens of Smyrna. Thank you so much.
One more. This is what I had to deal with for 15 weeks. Officer Defense. 18 weeks, yeah. Every week. I'm Trianna Arnold James. I grew up in Smyrna, born and raised. I see one of my pastors here with me. And I ditto everything that everybody have said. This is a great program. But the one thing is, it's an eye-opener. Because what you see on YouTube and social media and what they show you and you're making your decisions from that point of view, but then when you get behind the vest, you know, you get to see things from a different perspective and understand. And I thank God for the program because that now, we can go out to other people and say, "Well, you know what? You might want to look at it a different way." And all police officers are not bad. And Chief know that I've been volunteering with him for a long time in defense with Peace With The Protector and Coffee With The Cop, which I'll continue to do. And I'm just so glad that... And Heather, hanging with Heather and her not answering my texts because I text her so much. But it was just great. And like she said, that we became family. So the next class starts, I guess, in a couple of weeks. I just recommend... I would love to be here on the day when you graduate and that it be a packed room because I think it's an awesome program and I think it's a life-learning lesson. And I recommend everybody do it.
Thank you, guys. I love hearing the testimony from the class just because it gives you a different perspective. I can come up here and preach all day that this is the best class ever because I taught it. But when you hear it from other people, then, you know, you really get that perspective. Like she said, our next class is starting May 1st. Applications are already online, so if you want to sign up, please come do. But without further ado, we are going to introduce the class number seven of the Citizens Police Academy. Up first is Katina Cunningham.
Can't you just get one group picture?
Do you know who Sergeant Defense is, sir?
Trianna Arnold James. Paula Moon. Cedric Lumston. Michael Welch. Aria Marshall. We had one more who could not make it. Her name was... Is Patty Lawson. Her name is Patty Lawson. But this is our spring/summer 2018 class.
You want to say anything, David?
I'm going to ask you a question. You remember what TV show I told you was Lie of the Devil on the first night? NCIS. Okay. All right. Remember that. No, I just, once again, I want to thank y'all for participating. I know as much as y'all enjoy it, we enjoy sharing it too. The officers love it to be able to get that chance. And I know they love it when you do the ride-along with them on the road. That's always a lot of fun. But thank you very much.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all very much. Adam C. is a proclamation in recognition of Women's History Month. Mrs. Marilyn Blackburn has got that one. Marilyn?
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm so glad that you are here, especially all the women out there. It's a very exciting night tonight and I'm honored to be able to share this proclamation with all the wonderful, phenomenal women that are here and those that will be mentioned in our proclamation as well. So at this time, I'd like to ask for all of the women to please stand. I've got to read it. Whereas, Women's History Month traces its beginnings back to the first International Women's Day in 1911. And whereas, Women's History Month highlights the contribution of women to events in history and contemporary society. And whereas, Women's History Month honors the countless women who sacrificed and worked hard to ensure all people have an equal opportunity at pursuing the American dream. And whereas, Women's History Month recognizes that women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, Smyrna specifically has promoted women to historic roles in the community. Lorena Pruitt was Smyrna's first female mayor, elected in 1945. Smyrna elected women to the city council, starting in the 1980s with Sarah Jones and Kathy Brooks Jordan. And Smyrna named its first female city administrator with Tammy Sadler Jones in 2017. And whereas, Women's History Month recognizes that women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, Women's History Month honors and respects women that have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, Women's History Month recognizes that American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all now. I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the City of Smyrna, Georgia, do... I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the City of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Women's History Month. And before you apply, I would like to ask Max Bacon to please take a step off of your perch and down front.
Go where?
Go down front.
Go down?
Please. Tonight, I present Smyrna's first Women's History Month proclamation in honor of someone whom I've had the distinct opportunity to spend quality time with, someone who I believe to be a phenomenal woman, someone who lived in Smyrna 52 years, was a First Lady of Smyrna, served in the Armed Nurses Corps, the 53rd General Hospital, Kennelstone Hospital as a private-duty nurse for 20 years, and involved in many organizations in Smyrna, affectionately known as Dot, but I called her Miss Dot. I present this to the family of Max Bacon for remembrance of Miss Dorothy Mosley Bacon.
Oh, where's my sisters?
Oh, they're supposed to be up here. Come.
Hey.
Hey.
They told me.
Are you kidding me? She said she'd kill me.
And before we finish, Max, I'm going to ask that you'll turn around. Would you please take a picture so that Max is in front and we have all these wonderful phenomenal women?
Absolutely. What, you all want to say anything? I know everybody thinks I'm a lot like my dad, but I'm really, I was my mother. I'm re, huh? No, no, I don't need that. No work. But I think I'm really more like my mother, who was very unfiltered most of her life. But she did so many things that people don't even know about. And she was in the service, just soon as she got out of nursing school, she went straight into the Armed Forces as a second lieutenant and went to Fort Benning. And then she went overseas to Europe. And she was just an unbelievable person. And she made my dad what he was. And I think a lot of women do that to us. I mean, it's the women that make us really who we are. But y'all's role has really changed over the last years. It's more than just being somebody's spouse. Y'all are really involved in the community and what you do. And we have, let's see, one, two, three ladies on the council. And I'm going to tell you, for the most part, they're a lot smarter than us. And I know that's a reflection on me, but y'all are, to me, everybody's, we're on the same ground. But we couldn't do without y'all. And I thank y'all so much for being here and my sisters to be here. And if y'all want to say anything, make it quick. Here we go.
No, the only thing I'll say is a cute story. You know, a lot of World War II veterans would not talk about the war. And they usually didn't until it was later in their lives. And just a few weeks before mother died, I was at the nursing home talking to her. And I said, and her whole graduating class from Tomy General Hospital in Southern South Carolina volunteered immediately for World War II. And I said, Mama, why did you decide to go in the Army? And she said, well, I didn't. I wanted to be in the Navy. Their uniforms were cuter, but they put me in the Army. So that was kind of mother, but...
You want to say anything?
I have nothing to say.
We have another brother, but he doesn't come down from Kennelstone.
He's a refugee from Kennelstone.
Kennelstone. But we all grew up in Smyrna. Our parents built the house right behind City Hall in 1947. And that's when they started their family. Linda was first, and then me, then my brother, and then Ginny. And we're lucky to be here because Linda wanted to be an only child, so. Something she did. But anyway, thank y'all very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
There you go.
Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you, ladies.
Thank y'all so much. All right, let's see. Under four land issue zoning annexations, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, item A 2019-106, public hearing zoning request Z19-007, modifications of currently approved site plan and building elevations for Riverview Landing, 16.859 acres, land lot 58, 171, 172, 174, 175, Riverview Road and Nichols Drive, The Arden Companies LLC. I'm going to ask Ron Finley just to table that until the meeting of April the 1st. Mr. Finley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Vaunted Riverfront Project down on the Chattahoochee River that is now in the city of Smyrna. We look forward to the April 1st meeting to hear many of the details around the next iteration of what's going on the river. So I move to table 2019-106, the public hearing zoning request Z19-007.
Second.
Question, second table, although it's in favor of the motion. That's approved 7-0. Item four, B, C, and D are all the same issue. They relate to a zoning request, an approval to annex, and the final vote on the zoning. I'm going to read B, C, and D, and we will have that hearing and have the public, we'll have the vote and the public hearing separately. So item 201945, it's a public hearing only, zoning request Z19-002, rezoning from R20 and GC to R15 conditional for two single-family homes at a density of 1.89 units per acre, 1.09 acres, land lot 349. Green Ridge Street, Kimberly Norwood Properties is the applicant here. And the second issue, this property is not in the city limits. We will annex that under C, and then the final vote on the rezoning will be D. So Ms. Jones, will you give us the background, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Kimberly Norwood Properties LLC is requesting an annexation and rezoning from R20 and GC, which is the zoning in Cobb County, to R15 conditional for a property on Green Ridge Street for the construction of two new single-family residents at a density of 1.8 units per acre. The Planning and Zoning Board heard the zoning request at the February 11th, 2019 meeting and made a recommendation for approval by a vote of six to zero. Community Development recommends approval of the requested rezoning with conditions. And I believe Ken, you're going to be doing the presentation, Ken Sudrith, our Community Development Director, will be giving more background.
This is Ms. Wilkinson, District, Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Ken Sudrith to come up and talk to us about this application.
And before, as he's coming up, I need to say, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who is in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? Okay. If the record shows there isn't, Ken?
Thank you. Let me show you some illustrations and graphics to sort of fill out what Ms. Tammy Sattler-Jones has indicated to you. As already stated, this is coming to you with both a recommendation from staff and the Planning Commission to approve this request with conditions. What you see on the screen is the zoning map. It is on Green Ridge Street. It is one lot currently. They are proposing to split it. It is a vacant lot. They're proposing to put two detached single-family houses on there. The property is zoned in the county as R20 and GC, so it does have a split classification. What has been requested and what staff agrees is the right classification is R15 conditional, which would match what is across the street. It's shown as yellow on the map above. With regard to our future land use map, both the existing and the proposed, being that we try to match the county with regard to our land use, we would roll over the Community Activity Center classification. The proposed site plan is on the screen. This shows you what the setbacks are. There is one change in this request. They came in late this afternoon. Originally, with regard to the setbacks, they were asking for three waivers, 25 feet in the front, seven and a half on the side, and 35 feet on the rear. The issue on the side has been adjusted now to 10 feet, which basically means there is not a waiver necessary. So that's why you see the line through that aspect. So there is a change to that effect, and I wanted to get that on the record, that that seven and a half foot variance is no longer being requested. There is a five-foot right-of-way dedication with a five-foot, the normal five-foot sidewalk requirement that they will do in the back in the gray areas, as well as those highlighted are, is the stormwater detention facilities. And again, here are the requested variance. In addition to the setbacks, we also have a lot reduction from 85 feet in width to 69 feet. Staff is supportive of that. Staff is supportive of that front setback. We've eliminated the side setback. Another reduction is the minimum square footage from 2,000 square feet to 1,800 square feet for the size of the home. Here are the proposed elevations, very typical of what has been built within the city in the last, you know, 15 years or so. Photos of the subject property, and then photos of the adjacent property. Again, property to the north is in Cobb County. Property to the west is in the city, as well as to the east, part of it's in the city and part of it's in the county. So stated, staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval with several conditions. The, under our standard conditions, the ones that still apply would have to do with the stormwater management aspects, underground utilities, traffic improvements, you cannot bury any debris, the issue of meeting our tree ordinance, issues of landscape plan, and the requirement, there's multiple requirements dealing with landscaping that we've combined into one requirement here. But there are some specific conditions that deal directly with this request as well. Again, you've got the minimum setbacks, front 25 and rear 35 are really the variance, but the side would be 10 feet as well. 22-foot driveway, again, that's a standard requirement that we often put in our request. The right-of-way, we've already talked about, a dedication of five feet on that. And then we have not only the right-of-way dedication, then we would have a five-foot sidewalk with the normal two-foot grass buffer. Composition of the homes shall include a mixture of elements, but not limited to brickstone, shake, hardy plank, and stucco, and no elevation should be comprised of 100% hardy plank siding. And as we always do, we, 14 and 15, bind them to what they have submitted for the development of the property and the architectural style. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this.
Any questions, Ms. Sudrith?
The only thing I might add is just looking at the hydrology part of it, and I know that's part of the storm management. Correct. I was looking at what the city engineer had put into the, to the recommendation.
Right. And that would be a requirement that, a hydrology report that meets the requirements and approval of the city engineer would be part of this review process before we issue any permits.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Ken.
The applicant, we didn't, y'all need to be sworn in, don't just go. All right. Y'all just identify yourself and...
Sean Murphy, 3282 Lee Streets, Smyrna.
And I'm Tom Ash, 2793, Khaki Court, Marietta, Georgia.
Anything y'all want to add?
I'm not Garvis Sam, so I'm going to keep it real short. You guys know the Norwood Group, they've been developing here in Smyrna for a number of years. I've been their consultant for those years. They've been a major driver in changing rental units to permanent homeowners. And I'm really happy to see them going into this area of Smyrna and hopefully start that transition happening in that area. And I think they're taking a bit of a risk in this area. So one of the reasons we're asking for a couple of those variances, like the front yard setback, is to try to keep the cost of our concrete down and keep the cost of the landscaping in the front yard down, that sort of thing, because they really need to try to keep the price point down in this neighborhood.
All right, any questions?
I just want to thank you for continuing to invest in the city of Smyrna and all the growth that it has experienced over the past 20 years. And thank you for taking this risk. We appreciate it.
Happy to do it.
And I want to thank you as well for taking this opportunity to do something in that area of the city of Smyrna or bringing it into the city of Smyrna in that area of Ward Five. So I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Also, I'll ditto what my two former mates on the DS have said, but I want to ask a question. What's the price range for your homes?
There'll be, sorry, there'll be low 300s, probably at the 325 range.
Any other questions?
Yeah, a question for you. You could have stayed, could have done this project in Cobb County. Why do you want to be annexed into the city?
That's just because of our track record with Smyrna. We've done a number of homes in Smyrna and hopefully have developed a successful track record and relationship with the city of Smyrna. So any chance we get, we'll bring them into Smyrna.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I will close this portion of the item B, the public hearing, and we'll go to C, approval of ordinance 2019-02, annexation request, 100% owners requesting annexation of all tract of land lying and being in land lot 349, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia. A total of 1.09 acre tract being known as Green Ridge Street, Smyrna, Georgia. The effective date will be April the 1st, 2019, and reside in Ward Five. Anything you need to add to that, Ms. Jones?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to move to approve item 4C, 2019-63, approval of ordinance 2019-... 2019 dash 03, annexation request, 100% owners requesting annexation, all of tract of land lying and being in land lot 349, 17th District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia. A total of 1.09 acre tract being known as Green Ridge Street, Smyrna, Georgia. The effective date will be April 1, 2019, and will reside in Ward Five.
Motion second. Anything further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? That's approved, 7-0. Item D, 2019 dash 116, final vote, zoning request, Z19 dash 002, rezoning from R-20 and G-C to R-15 conditional for two single-family homes at a density of 1.89 units per acre, 1.09 acres land lot 349, Green Ridge Street, Kimberly Norwood Properties LLC. Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. So at this time, I would like to move to approve item 4D, 2019 dash 116, the final vote, zoning request, Z19 dash 002, rezoning from R-20 and G-C, which is general commercial, to R-15 conditional for two single-family homes at a density of 1.89 units per acre, one point, land lot, sorry, land lot 349, Green Ridge Street, Kimberly Norwood Properties LLC.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Thank y'all very much. Thank y'all. Y'all are dismissed.
You are.
Yeah. Item five, previous license. A, license 2019 dash 03, public hearing, previous license request, license 2019 dash 03, beer, wine, and pouring, liquor pouring, 2500 South Cobb Drive, AV AMC Company LLC, doing business as own the range with Willie T. Chandler as the agent, as the applicant here. Okay? Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Willie T. Chandler will be the registered agent responsible for the sale of alcohol at the referenced location. Mr. Chandler has been given a copy of the alcohol beverage ordinance and attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. Willie Chandler has agreed to abide by the guidelines set forth by the City of Smyrna, ordinance governing the sale of alcohol. A background investigation conducted by the Smyrna Police Department failed to reveal information that would preclude issuance of this license. With this said, staff does recommend approval.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone who's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this issuance of this previous license? Anyone, okay, anyone that wants to make a comment, or I need, do we need to have the applicant too? Even if you're a foregiving, you just want to make a comment, I want to get everybody sworn in at one time. So, Mr. Cockham, would you step forward? Thank you. One of those people that raised her hand. You couldn't see, could you? And plus, the applicant, even if you hear the testimony and you don't want to make a comment, you don't have to. We just want to get everybody sworn in all at one time. Y'all step forward. Thank you.
Where are the testimony given? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll have a seat. This is Ms. Susan Wilkinson's ward. Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to call up Mr. Willie T. Chandler as the agent for the applicant for the privileged license.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Fantastic.
Good. So I understand you've been through the process that the city requires in terms of applying for the privileged license?
Yes, ma'am.
And you understand the seriousness of the permit and that the city of Smyrna takes it seriously with, in terms of background checks and...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Could you also tell us a little bit about your business that you're planning to have there?
Sure. You mind if I start a little bit about my personal background?
Sure. No, I don't mind at all.
My name is Willie Chandler, and over the last 20, 20-some-lit years, I've worked for Marriott International, you know, reorganizing hotels, restructuring bars, increasing, you know, liquor licensing, liquor sales, things to that nature. About five years ago, I had the opportunity to purchase a sports bar in Dunwoody, and I own that sports bar in Dunwoody, Georgia. So I take this very seriously. I take the community very seriously. In the city of Dunwoody, I sponsor the football team in Dunwoody. I sponsor, basically, I'm very active in the community because, you know, there is a saying, you know, to whom much is given, much is expected. And I feel as though if I'm in the community, I need to be involved. Like even this evening with the QR code that was given out for that, I made a special note so I can get involved with the community. So I take this very seriously.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you telling us that. And could you also tell us a little bit about the business?
This particular business will be geared around, and we have a little bit more of the barbecue meats. We will be doing special menu items, a couple, you know, inspired rubs with pulled pork, pulled chicken, working on a really new concept of red velvet, red velvet chicken and waffles concept we're still working on. So I am a Johnson Wells graduate of Johnson Wells University in Providence, Rhode Island. So I'm culinary-inspired. So I know this is a liquor license hearing, but I'm more inspired about the food and the things that we're going to do to the food. The wine aspect of it is just, for me, you know, that's the side part. I want to delight your appetite.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, I would, I was also interested in your hours, that you're, this restaurant is going to be located within another business, correct, in the inside of a retail store, and then, and it's also the gun store. So if you could tell us more about that part of it and what you have in mind to do, you know, in terms of the interior of the store.
In terms of that, the, inside this store is, the hours are 10 to 8, and we will combine, we will make sure we're only open from 10 to 8. To your reference of, you know, being inside the gun store, if I'm not mistaken, there are no person who has, or purchasing something from the store is allowed to carry that, I think is carried from the front, from the back to the front. So, you know, I'm very conscious, conscientious of where we are located and, you know, trying to put things in place. If someone is, if I think, you didn't ask me directly, but I'm assuming you're concerned about how much thought I've given to if someone's drinking and, you know, partaking and doing something different, so I'll just jump right in. You know, if you're consuming, you know, you know, more than two drinks, or if you have a drink, a second drink or something like that, that we would stamp your hand so we'll know that you've had a second drink and you shouldn't be going over to the range. I would also like to mention, you cannot enter the range from inside the store. That is a totally separate entrance. And thirdly, we are more than 80 paces away from entering there, where there is another alcohol outlet closer to the entrance of the range already in business. So...
So in the, in terms of the parameters that y'all will be taking in the store to help with, you know, alleviate, well, and maybe I should have some of the people that came, that wanted to speak, speak first to see, hear their concerns, and then maybe you could address that at that time.
Absolutely. I'll take a seat.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone that was sworn in that would like to make a comment, please step forward. Identify yourself, tell us who you are and where you live at, and we give you time to, we'll start the clock on you.
Thanks. Thank you very much, Mayor Bacon. I'm Lisa Deleke, and I am a citizen of Smyrna. I am a patron of Outdoor Adventures as well, and my husband is as well, and we have been for years. We go shooting there. We bought our firearms there. I'm not comfortable having alcohol in the same place, even though it's 80 steps away or whatever it might be, and I know it's a separate entrance, and you might be stamped on somebody's hand, but that doesn't mean, I fear someone could go into the shooting range with too much alcohol in their system, or just, they don't have to have too much alcohol, they can just be amped up and they go have a drink. It's just, I think it's a bad concoction. I think it's a really unsafe idea, and I don't support it.
Hi, my name is Moshe Balakwe Michael Adelike, Lisa's husband. I live here in Smyrna also, by the Covered Bridge area. But like I said, my wife, I completely agree with my wife. We've thought about it, we've thought about it for many, this, when this was, when I heard about this. And I believe that mixing alcohol with firearms, I think is a bad idea. Not necessarily, because I know that they're trying to do something a little different, and I'm very excited about the food aspect of it, you know, but you don't have to have alcohol to enjoy a good meal. And I believe that because it's so close, and me myself, and going there before, I've experienced some things that are just a little odd, my experience. There was one time I was in a parking lot, I was walking there to go look at the sale that it had. I was dressed down in my workout outfit, and some guy just pulled out a gun and decided to cock it right there in front of me. I just, that was odd. And when you mix, when, I just, it was very odd. Anyway, another incident is a guy who just, I was walking in there, and I'm very respectful of that business. I always make sure if I'm taking my, my shooting range items, then a duffel bag, I don't have anything on me, and then some guy just in the car, just revved his car up, really had one of those really souped-up trucks, and just revved it up very close, very close to where I was walking. And I was not in this man's path or this person's path, but I just thought that was odd. Now, mixing that with alcohol, I don't think that's a good idea.
Sounds like they may have already been on alcohol.
Maybe. I don't know. I don't know, but I don't know what the situation may have been. But either way, you know, I just think that that's just, it just sounds, it just doesn't feel good, you know? Those are a few things I've experienced there. Overall, the great, the company is a wonderful company, the great staff, very educational, but I believe just the aspect of having alcohol in that very close vicinity, I think it's, it's not a good idea.
Anyone else that was sworn in that would like to give any testimony? Your name, your address, and any comments you'd like to make.
Alex Bakri, 39, 3459 Shawnee Trail. I'm not a proponent where you have firearms and alcohol. To me, we're going back to the old western days in the saloons. But it's a question of liabilities. God forbid something happens, because not only does the establishment liable, but the people on this council that vote in favor are also liable for approving it. One solution would be, and if I missed it with someone else, and you do pass it, I hope you consider a stipulation that a maximum of two drinks per person is a sign, and that's it. That way, you don't know people's tolerance to alcohol, but if you set a, have a sign set up, two drinks per person maximum, it cuts down on anyone getting carried away. I hope you take that into consideration in voting on this. But again, I've talked to a lot of people since I've heard about this, and they don't agree with this at all, couldn't be here tonight, but they totally, I have yet to run into one that agrees that it's a good idea. And I hope you take this into consideration. Thank you.
My name is Javier Azais, 1093 Sarin Way, Marietta, Georgia. I'll be working with Willie, and similar to Willie, I've had 21 years of hotel experience, also working with bars. I think what we can't discredit is that we wouldn't want to put ourselves in a situation where we will be harmed either. I think that the perception is, is that everyone's going to get a drink and that we don't care what happens. We have employees, family members, people that'll be working there, we'll be taking every precaution possible, and there's policies and guidelines in place that will prevent certain scenarios from happening. And I completely respect the example you gave, but that example happened without us even existing. So I think that, like you said, there was probably alcohol already included in that scenario, but then there's people that are just ignorant, and we can't control that anyway, whether they were drunk or not. And I think the most important thing is that we wouldn't want to do anything that would jeopardize our family also. I'm going to have a son that's probably going to work there also. So we wouldn't want to be in a situation that would jeopardize anyone else, but including ourselves. So I don't think that they've established such a great business and such a great business model to have something this simple come in and just destroy everything. It's a well-thought-out process, and it's something that we take very seriously, but more importantly, it's something that we're dedicated to, and it's a small portion of a very big picture when it comes to the culinary aspect of it, and also the opportunities and the jobs that are going to be provided through this bar and restaurant and also the banquet space. There's just so many great positive things about it that I think that we'll be able to control and minimize any other negative effects.
Thank you. Hey, we won't start the clock till you get here, Nancy.
But I have to apologize, I wasn't sworn in.
Well, all right. Just because we went, we grew up together, swear in.
I have two quick questions. Yeah, yeah.
I normally don't do that, but since she walked all the way up here.
I do apologize. I have two questions.
Nancy, just tell us who you are and where you live.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nancy McGee, I live on Roswell Street in Smyrna. I was wondering about the hand stamp. That sounds like not very permanent to me. The concern that some people have expressed about having a number of drinks and then maybe going into the shooting range, you can pretty much wash one of those off if you work at it in the bathroom. So I'm wondering why the, the, or the restaurant, or even the shooting range, doesn't employ some kind of a method? I read about this on site. I know this has been done, selling alcohol in other shooting ranges, but you could scan the driver's license as somebody comes into the restaurant so that anybody could know that they might, that the person might have been drinking, if, and I guess it would be scanned again when they go into the shooting range. And then the other, the other question that I have is, will the restaurant sell only liquor without selling food, or is the sale of food a requirement to order alcohol? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else that was, please step forward, tell us who you are and your address and any comments.
I'm Jay Wallace. My address most of the time is 2500 South Cobb Drive. I am the owner and CEO of Adventure Outdoors. In this December, I will have 43 years of having a business license here in Smyrna. Of those 43 years, I've had 40 years of a privileged license. I know and understand what it takes. And I'm here to tell you that there were several people that wanted this position in our store, and we picked Willie because of his background and the kind of, and we also went and looked at the operation that he runs in Dunwoody. He runs a professional store, and I want to emphasize, there is a location that's closer to our store that we have no control over. So which would you rather be? Would you rather know that someone's had a drink or not know? At our store, at least we're going to know. Just next door, we have no way of knowing. And I also want to tell you this, we're one of the only types of business that can actually say that we're not going to do business with you just because I don't want to, just because I don't feel good about it. Name another business can do that. And I have full backing of the federal government, the state government, and I would hope the city. So this is, we understand that it's serious, but you know, we're opening a restaurant, and we're not the only person that's opening a restaurant of this type. We have competition that's doing the same thing, and it hasn't been a problem. And I do believe it would be against state law for this to happen if it was a problem. And I do believe it would be against state law for this to happen if it was a problem. And there was people that came up with reasons and said that, oh, this is terrible, you're having alcohol in the same place. But it has not been a problem. It is legal for someone to go into a restaurant that serves alcohol that has a firearm. That is legal in this state. And it has not been an issue. It's easy to come up and dream an issue that doesn't exist. And I would say to you, pay attention to the ninety-nine percent, over ninety-nine percent, not the few that could be or would be. Because I will not shame you. I haven't thus far. I have an excellent relationship with a mayor and city council, I hope, with the local police, with our police department. And I take everything that I do very seriously. Because it's one of the things that my father taught me, don't do anything to shame your name. And Max, I know you understand that as well.
Before you leave.
Can I ask them some questions?
As I guess most folks know, Jay owns Adventure Outdoors. So he has the, you've got the biggest opportunity to really mess up your whole business if, if something did, if it wasn't handled right.
Listen, listen, you know, we, we turn down people. Because guess what? They can drink alcohol anywhere. And they can smoke marijuana anywhere. And they can take pills anywhere. Okay? And so we, our folks are trained to look for these things. And we just turn the sale down. Or we say, no, you can't shoot today. So this is not something new to us by any stretch of the imagination.
You got a question?
I have, I have some questions.
Shoot.
Okay. And I want to thank you for coming tonight. And I also want to thank you for having your business in the city of Smyrna and in Ward Five. And I'm very proud to have your business in Ward Five. And you know, I really like your store.
Thank you very much.
So I want you to, you know, know that. I do know that some people are concerned. And that's where I would like, you know, to also have some feedback from you too, to just, you know, to reassure people in terms of, of that. And I think some of what you said has, but I guess in terms of someone being able to, I don't know if there's parameters or things that are put in place. I have done a little research from other gun stores that have, you know, told, communicated to me that they, that have bars and restaurants in them, that they do have some parameters. And so I just, I just were, I'm curious if there's parameters, you know, in terms of have, you know, having drinks and then going to shoot? Or if, if it's maybe, you know, this is what I've been told at the other location, or, or not your location, but the other business, that they do restrict that. And that they also restrict people from being able to buy guns after they've had drinks, is what I was told. And...
Yes, we do, we, we do that already.
And so, you know, in terms of just, you know, those kinds of things, or even, I guess my understanding from what was being asked was a limit on how many drinks a person could have there at, at the bar, even if they weren't shooting. I don't know if that's something even possible, but you know, in terms of, or, I don't know if they were talking about that, or just a limit of two drinks. And then, you know, no more than two to go shoot, or go shoot in the range. But I don't know if that's even possible. But just what kind of parameters have you, you know, thought of in terms of the, you know, combining the business in the, in the store? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned before, I am a twenty-year veteran of Marietta International. But there is a company that's called TIPS. I am TIPS trained and certified. And basically what that means is that I am trained to indicate when someone's had too many drinks. You also, you don't worry, you're not, you're not, you're not only concerned about what you've served someone, you can go anywhere and have a drink. I'm trained to say when you walk in, maybe you've already had a pill of marijuana or something else, that, you know, you may already be intoxicated and I have to cut you off. At my place in Dunwoody, that happens all the time, I have to cut people off. And we're, just, you, sometimes you have to say, you look like you've already intoxicated, I don't know where you've been, but unfortunately, I can't serve you anything this evening.
Okay.
She's, she's asked about the stipulate, I, I would like to know what stipulation and guidelines you have implemented as of now in writing? What can you say that's in writing?
Well, I would definitely follow the national TIPS training. I will follow their guidelines. And that's online, that is a national company. All major hotels and restaurants follow it. I will follow every guideline, I, I have my certificate, I will follow all those. But in addition to that, I have to be concerned about the environment in which we're in. And that's when we talked about, if you have two drinks, that I will stamp your hand. Not to mention, if I'm serving you drinks, I will be concerned if someone has three and four drinks. So at some point, I gotta cut you off. We are there to, like I said, delight your, your appetite. So I'm not there for you to indulge to a point where you're intoxicated. So I'm ve- very concerned about that. To answer your question specifically, I will follow every guideline of TIPS.
But is there anything in writing, Mr. Chandler?
Yes, as I said, the TIPS guideline is online. That's what their training is about. That's why you get the training, to make sure you follow that. I mean, I can print it up or send it to the council via email. But every restaurant and hotel company follows that guideline. That is what we live by.
I'm gonna make a, a general comment and then a, a simple question. The, I, I think perception has a lot to do with what's, what's going on here tonight. And, and I'll admit that when the question first came up, the perception is, hey, you got, you're selling guns and you're selling alcohol at the same time. Perception is that, that, that can be a problem. But it, it, you, you put two and two together, and as you mentioned, Mr. Chandler, there's a, I don't know what business it is, and, and I don't know how far it is down the road, but eighty, it's further than eighty steps, or closer than eighty steps from the front door of the shooting range to someplace else that serves alcohol.
Correct.
And they're not gonna stamp anybody's hand.
They're not, nope.
And there's gonna be no prevention from those, somebody coming from that store into the gun range other than your employees. And Mr. Wallace, it says, no, I smell alcohol on your breath, or something that indicates to, to your employees that there, there's a problem there.
And they've been open longer than, well, we're not even open yet. But I would like to also mention, it's a separate entrance, that entrance is closer to that alcohol-serving establishment than my restaurant will be.
And, and that's the other thing, I guess.
As of today, right now.
I don't think I've ever been in the store when you can walk directly from Adventure Outdoors into the range. I, I, I think that store, that door's always been locked.
That's another point, you cannot. I, I was there today, and I was there, and you can't get into the range without going out and around.
How, how close is the restaurant, the, the other location?
Seventy-five pieces.
It's seventy, it's seventy-four steps. Yeah. That's all I have to say. I, I, like I said, the perception is, you know, it's an odd situation, but the reality is, is a totally different situation.
Let me say this as well, you know, we have our, our banquet hall upstairs, and they've been drinking alcohol up there for seven years. Have you ever heard a problem? The noise?
The fire light.
Not from us, yeah.
But, but usually... I want to ask you a question. Is there any particular reason why you can't just keep this to beer and wine, which are a little bit lighter than alcohol?
There are, you know, certain, say it again? Oh, there's...
If you, if you want to, it almost sounds like, okay, we're gonna have the good old boys, and we're gonna have cigars, and we're going to have this and that. And it's just gonna, you know, it's gonna be a real experience after they come from the gun range.
Smoking, we're in no smoking center.
Well, I know that, you know what I'm saying.
Well, as a, as a business owner, there's a lot of money that I'm investing in this, in the city and to, to get this establishment open. And I don't want anyone to say, hey, you know, we want to go out and have lunch, or various companies are taking their teams or various companies in the area, you know, Bank of America across the street, hey, we're going out for holiday lunch, and we want to buy the team a holiday drink. Well, we can't go to Adventure, we can't go to, on the range, because they don't have, we can't give our folks a drinks for the holiday. I want to make sure that I'm not, we're not gonna be less than in any other business. Like I said, there's a business closer to the entrance that serves alcohol. And I believe our food would be superior to anybody else in Smyrna. I'm supposed to say that, because I'm cooking it. But I want to make sure you're coming there, because you know, you, you want to eat there and that I'm not gonna not have something that you may have want, and you're gonna go to another establishment. So with that investment, I want to make sure my options are just as good as anybody else in the area, especially someone who's closer to their gun range than I am.
And let me just say this too, it's our, it's my vision, and it's Willie's vision, is to have a place that people will come to just to come and eat, without having anything to do with the rest of the store.
Yeah.
And we also have a vision that maybe in the future, that we can have something that ties in with us to where we can have a time where they can come in, and they can eat with us, and then go to the Braves game, and then come back and have a function in our hall. So the vision of our store is to be a community center, friendly place, that people think well of. And to be a full restaurant, not to be, it's not a bar. So please remove that from your mind. That's not what it is.
So, and thank you. And my, and I, you know, I thank you for everything that y'all have said. And now, for you, Mr. Wallace, I guess my concern is, and I, and I believe you, it's a, it's a, sounds like a nice restaurant with, you know, the option of getting a drink with your meal and things like that. But I guess the, you know, just wanting to make sure, and I heard what you said before, but what are the parameters? Because I think some of the, to me, that some of the responsibility will fall on your staff to not allow someone to go into the shooting range or to purchase a gun after they've been drinking. And I understand they can go somewhere else and...
No, but that's an on, that's an ongoing thing that we, we, we look at every single day. Alright? So I thought about this when, when we were setting it up. First thing I came up with is the driver's license idea, right? Well, the thing is, do you want, is it right for me to ask everybody's driver's license sitting at the table? How would you feel? They're gonna go down the road. I'm gonna run them off and they won't be back. I wouldn't eat, I wouldn't eat at a place like that. But, but if you stamp everybody's hand after they've had two drinks, and, and to your point, if they have a liquor drink after one, because it's not beer and wine. And there is a difference. And I agree with you a hundred percent. So that's not an issue. We're glad to do that. But if you take the driver's license of the person that's paying the bill, that doesn't have everybody that's at the table. And we do want to feel like we're in America, not Russia.
So you're saying that you would limit a patron having one alcoholic drink from going into your range, or, or...
No, I, we will stamp their hand if they have a liquor drink, just one. But I mean, I'm sorry, but you can check with your police chief, somebody can drink one beer and still pass and drive.
Right.
Okay, so they're, they're not impaired. Because I don't think the law is incorrect to say that someone is impaired after having one beer.
I see what, I see what you're saying. And I, I guess, you know, when I had done some research, I guess the, one of the things that were, was different is the restaurant area was separate than the gun store, at least the ones that I checked about. It was in a separate entrance and every, and everything like that. And that was what they, what I was told, they reassured that if you, after you've had drinks, that you wouldn't be allowed to go purchase a gun afterwards. And I don't, I mean, I don't know if that's gonna solve everything, but you know, I'm just trying to, to just reassure people. And I hear what you're saying about your employees and, oh, and the other thing was that it was a membership club, I understand it, the ones that are more locally. And then the one, I think another one I checked on, it was a twenty-four hour, once they had a drink, it was twenty-four hours before they were allowed back. I know, that's what, that's what it said. Twenty-four hours. It was one in Florida, and that I read something...
Won't you make it a week?
Pardon me?
I mean, won't you make it a week? That's ridiculous.
Well, they, they could go shoot and then go eat and...
No, 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 that would be ridiculous, somebody wait twenty-four hours after having one drink.
Here's what we need to do, there was some other, y'all, excuse me, y'all. We have some other folks that were sworn in, I want to get their testimony, for those that were sworn in, if you want to make any comment. For those that were sworn in, this is, here comes a young man, I think. And, and then after this, then we'd really need to get back just to the applicant and ask him some questions. Yes, tell us who you are and where you live.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. And my name is Marshall Moon, and I live at Pinehurst Drive, Smyrna, Georgia. Sir, I work at Adventures Outdoors. I'm their greeter. And, and the people, now, a lot of the customers that comes out the door, I have to check their receipts, and they get mad at me. They say, I didn't steal this merchandise, I bought it, and you don't have the right to see my receipt. And I say, sir, ma'am, that's store policy, that's my job. And now, if a person comes in and they drink, I look at it this way. If a person that is sober gets mad just because I asked to see their receipt, what's gonna happen when they say, well, I want to go to the range and I want to shoot? I want to shoot my firearm, but yet they're turned down? That's what I'm looking at. And especially if they come out the door and they do buy, now, they might not be allowed to buy a gun, but they're allowed to buy other merchandise and I asked to see their receipt. If a person, sir, gets mad, and they're sober because I asked to see their receipt, what's gonna, what's gonna keep them from going ballistic? That's, that's what I'm looking at. And, and so, yes, sir, I'm, I'm gonna be honest, and I know that Mr. and Ms. Wallace and Eric is, is sitting right there, but I'm gonna say this, I'm totally against it, one hundred and ten percent. So I thank you.
Thank you. Alright, is there anyone else that was sworn in that has not made any comment or would like to make comment? I'm gonna ask the applicant, Mr. Chandler, to come back up front. Are there any other questions or comments, Mr. Wu?
Thanks, Mr. Chandler, appreciate you trying to open up a business here in Smyrna. Couple, I had a chance to see the, the layout there today, it looks like a nice, nice structure, so to speak, inside the building. So the, the liquor license will go with you, and I assume you have a lease for a specific space inside the building, is that right? Okay. So, are folks, would folks be allowed to take the drinks outside of your leased space?
Absolutely not.
So just within, and is actually, there's physical walls around?
Absolutely.
The space that you have.
There's only one way to enter, into the restaurant area.
Okay, okay. Um, okay. Then, another idea. Anybody else? Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. I have a question of Mr. Wallace, actually, if that's okay? If you don't mind coming back up? My question...
Hey, I'm a little shy, so...
I, I, I've gathered. So let me, so you mentioned earlier that you've got professionally trained staff, and you've been in business for years and years. And so, if somebody, so you tell me a little bit about the training that they go through so that they can recognize if somebody's coming in from an outside establishment who's been drinking or under the influence, or what, what, what kind of training?
Our written policy is that anyone, and I really don't want to go into everything about, that we do for firearms, because it'd be training for everyone. No, not what to do. But all of our staff is trained in writing that if you suspect anything that's out of the ordinary, you're to call management. So we have two people, not just one, making the decision of that we're not, we're not gonna go through with that transaction. People that are, that have been drinking or any other substance is just one thing that we deal with. We deal with multiple things of reasoning why someone's not allowed to buy a firearm. And so that's all part of their training.
I asked the question because I, I'm trying to figure out in my mind how it's not better to have more controls on what somebody's drinking and more oversight than if somebody were coming in off the street? That's why I asked the question.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chandler, I want to address you. I want to thank you for taking the risk to invest in Smyrna, and particularly a creative investment like this one. It's not common to see this investment, and hence all the questions. I, I understand what bravery that takes to be an investor in something. I, I have sent something to my colleagues tonight by email on the TIPS program. I spent twenty years at the Georgia Restaurant Association and the Georgia Hotel and Lodging Association, so I'm very familiar with the program. TIPS stands for Training for Intervention Procedures. It is just... It is just as Mr. Chandler indicated, it's a way to be proactive in treating the customer who may have been over-served before arriving and certainly to be on the watch for the over-service potential for a customer who may be sitting in front of them. So, they spend their time on this program, training people to be symbolically and in reality, looking at that customer for their behavior pattern and the risk that might be fall some other patrons. So, thank you for your ongoing support of the TIPS program and for your adoption of that ongoing really responsible, uh, business model, uh, procedure. But it's also a requirement under our law to have everybody properly trained in the laws and the service of alcohol. So, thank you for doing it right. As Mr. Wallace pointed out, as an entrepreneur, he didn't have to do this. He interviewed a lot of people before he got to you and, and you know how scrupulous he can be, but how as an entrepreneur who has 40-plus years of experience in his own businesses in Smyrna, he has a lot at risk financially and otherwise in his reputation. So, that he invested in you, this sort of endorsement is high praise indeed. I'm more importantly interested in your culinary, I mean, I know Johnson Wales does not produce, you know, halfway culinarians. You, you do it right when you take on a challenge for food service. So, I'm looking forward to being a patron of those, uh, delights that you're gonna provide for us. So, I know you're not gonna make a ton of money as an alcohol purveyor in this community and you're probably, uh, gonna take a little while to, uh, see the growth that you would probably normally see if you were a standalone resident like you have in Dunwoody. But we're grateful that you invested here and that you have an understanding that the community can and should be supportive of what you're doing, at the same time creating a new business model that others might wanna emulate. So, thank you for that. I just want, my final, uh, comment is that you have a competent team that you're bringing to the table, who has the experience, is gonna make a huge difference. We, as a council, are taking this application under advisement because by law we should. And as the Second Amendment points out, there is a right to bear arms, there is a right to free speech, we heard that tonight, but we also have the right to, um, engage in commerce. And for me, it's easy to support an applicant who is wanting to invest in our community, not just of their money, but of their soul and their talents to, to bring their skills to a business. And for that, I applaud you and I thank you and I'll be supporting this application.
Thank you. I would also like to make a note to that point. Um, you may not know this, but I approached Mr. and Ms. Wallace and his family about this well over a year ago. This has been one, when I first came to them, it was like, okay, we'll get back to you. This was not something that has been, uh, overnight. They had made me wait a long time. So, uh, I, I know there are other people interested. They actually, like you said, came out to my place, inspected my kitchen, inspected my operation and things like that. So, this has been over a year in, in, in the making before he actually said, "Okay, we'll give you a shot." So, I thanked them.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler.
Well, I'd like to ask Mr. Cochran, our city attorney, a question. Uh, it, it appears that this, uh, application meets all the requirements, uh, that we have established in the city of Smyrna. Um, it appears that they have. Is there any reason for us not to approve this?
Yeah, I'll try to stay out of the policy issue if I can. The, the law's clear on alcohol licenses and it's, it's not a subjective thing. It's not something that you guys can just kinda do a, a test, a subjective test is, you know, do I like it or not like it? You, you've got to consider an app, an alcohol application like this under the ordinance that exists at the time the application's filed. And so, we've looked at this. Uh, we have distance requirements, you know, of, of establishment that serves alcohol has to be a certain distance from certain types of things. It, all the distance requirements here have been met. We've got other requirements that will have to be met as they operate, but, um, the law is clear that if, if the, um, the applicant meets all the existing requirements of the local law, they're entitled to a license. It, it can't be a subjective thing, say, "Oh, I don't think that this place should get a license" for whatever reason. It, it's, it, it can't be that. It's called a privileged license, but that's a name only. They've got, there's all kinds of court cases where, um, courts say that if, if someone meets the requirements, that they're entitled to a license and if they don't get the license, the court can require the government to give it. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I think so. I'm looking at the application. It does meet, excuse me, all the distance requirements for schools, churches and, um, let me see, what else was there? I can't find it.
Yeah, those are the only two that are at play here is the schools and, and churches. And we went through this analysis, uh, Ken's Department and I went through this when it was on the agenda at the last meeting where it got tabled and, and, uh, you know, we, we're satisfied that it meets all of those requirements.
Okay. Ms. Wilkins?
Okay, um, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna, uh, talk a little bit about, uh, what I've been going through with this application and, uh, just the questions that have asked and the, the concerns that have been expressed to me. And I have asked a lot of questions and, um, and of the city attorney, we've talked, discussed about it a lot. And I also, um, like the business that Mr. Chandler has described in terms of the, um, the restaurant that he's talking about and, um, and I'm, you know, excited to see that coming into Ward Five. But I just want to also say that, uh, I appreciate the, this process that we're having tonight and the, this opportunity for everyone to be able to speak about their, um, their concerns and, you know, and just give the, the citizens an opportunity to understand better what, um, what this is, what this all means. And, uh, because I think that had we not had this opportunity that when, um, if, you know, if it get, if it had a got, if it got passed and then we hadn't had this opportunity publicly, that they may not understand, um, you know, everything that's going on. So, I do appreciate that and I appreciate the business that is in Ward Five. And I've, I've listened to your testimony, both of you, the, uh, Mr. Wallace, the owner of, of Adventure Outdoors and also the, uh, new owner of the restaurant on the range. And, uh, um, you know, I, at this time, I'm gonna support the business and, um, make a motion, move to make a motion to, for approval. For privileged license 5A, um, LIC 2019-03, public hearing privileged license request, LIC 2013-03, um, for beer, wine and liquor pouring at 2500 South Cobb Drive, AVAMC Company LLC, doing business as On The Range with Willie T. Chandler as agent.
Say. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? That's approved, uh, six to one with Ms. Blackburn voting in the negative. Uh, next item on the agenda is item IB, privileged license, uh, license 2019-09, public hearing, uh, privileged license request, 2019-80, beer and wine package, 5220, South Cobb Drive, Clipper Petroleum, Inc., doing business as Clipper number 77, with Edward Hong as agent. Is Mr. Hong here? Okay. Uh, Ms. Jones, the background.
Edward Hong will be the registered agent responsible for the sale of alcohol at the referenced location. Mr. Hong has been given a copy of the alcohol beverage ordinance and attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. He agreed to abide by the guidelines set forth by the City of Smyrna ordinance governing the sale of alcohol. A background investigation conducted by the Smyrna Police Department failed to review, reveal information that would preclude issuance of this license. Therefore, staff recommends approval.
Um, Mr. Hong is here. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of this, uh, license, a packaged beer and wine? Mr. Hong, if you'll please come forward. Okay, this is in Mr. Fennel's district. Mr. Fennel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I know Mr. Hong is not a stranger to this, uh, part of the law or this, this business. So, we're grateful to welcoming him, uh, in, into this new location with food service, culinary delights and gasoline. We appreciate this corner having been unfulfilled for so long that he's willing to invest. You wanna talk about your business a little bit, please?
Yes, uh, we're gonna be opening up a brand new convenience store, state of the art. Um, we are rolling out our Clipper image, uh, slowly among the marketplace. Uh, this will be our third location in the, uh, city of Smyrna and we, uh, love doing business here. Uh, but we'll be building a large convenience store with your basic convenience store offerings. Uh, in addition to that, there'll be a Bojangles restaurant attached to or within the building that'll be adjacent, uh, to the convenience store. Um, and that'll be, uh, state of the art as well. So, uh, and I'll be selling BP, uh, motor fuel, uh, in, uh, on the, on the front there.
Awesome. Thank you, uh, for that intro. You've been in Smyrna for how many years?
Ten years.
Ten years. So, uh, we're grateful for your continued and ongoing investment here. I know that there are some procedural things, uh, Mr. Sudarath. Everything has been met as stipulation requirement, all the setbacks and all the rules and the postings. So, we're comfortable that the public is most aware and having seen no other member of the public standing up to either object or, uh, accept me cheer for this invested business. Mr. Mayor? I see no comment from a, for a public hearing standpoint. Do you want to close that hearing so that we can act?
Yeah.
Unless somebody has questions.
Wait, you ran the applicant off.
He want, he want, he wants to see the vote, so that's what he's here for.
Now, I asked, was there any one that wanted to make a comment and no one stepped forward, so.
Okay.
You can make your motion.
Okay. If there's no public comment, Mr. Hong, thank you for your investment and I want to have the privilege of welcoming you to Ward Seven with this, uh, developed property here in, in an area that's needed it for a long time on Oak Drive there at South Cobb Drive, just at the intersection of 285. Uh, it is bound to be a successful business and thank you for being here. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of LIC 2019-09. Hold on, we gotta go to the next one? All right. Privilege license, beer and wine package, 5220, South Cobb Drive, Clipper Petroleum, Inc., DBA Clipper number 77, with Mr. Edward Hong as agent.
Have a motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approved seven zero. Thank you very much. Item Six is formal business, uh, A 2019-92. Approve the certification of agreement for the allocation and distribution of proceeds from the Title Ad velorem Tax, TAVT, between the City of Smyrna and Cobb County and authorize the mayor to sign any related documents. Ms. Jones, the background.
The Title Ad velorem Tax, TAVT, is a one-time state and local tax. This tax applies to all new and used vehicles purchased through a dealership or from a private individual. The tax is collected by the county tax commissioner and dispersed to the state, county, school, district and cities based upon the formulas prescribed by law. Pursuant to House Bill 329 that was passed in 2018, an amendment changed the manner of distribution for the proceeds of the alternative ad velorem tax on motor vehicles to be effective July 1st, 2019 and remaining in effect until amended by law. Staff recommends approval of the agreement with Cobb County and for the mayor to sign any related documents.
Ms. Ron Fennel, who chairs the Finance and Administration Committee. Mr. Fennel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the Finance Committee has taken this under advisement. This is a state mandate decided by the Georgia General Assembly administered through Cobb County. We're taking the, uh, formal step here of acknowledging that, uh, mandatory requirement and I move approval of the Certificate of Agreement for Allocation and Distribution of the Proceeds from the Title Ad velorem Tax, TAVT, between the City of Smyrna and Cobb County and to authorize the mayor to sign any related documents.
Have a motion second, just for comments. This, um, this state law, um, is actually gonna hurt our, um, our budget as far as revenue.
Yes.
Probably in the amount of.
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
Eight hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, which, um, I, I don't think we have any other choice but to adopt this resolution so we can have an agreement with Cobb County, but.
Sadly.
Looks like it's gonna hurt us. Anyway, if we get any more great ideas out of the state, we're gonna go bankrupt.
Really?
Okay. Have a motion second. Any, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? That's approved seven zero. Item B under formal business, 2019-119, approval and adoption of the city's morning investment policy. Uh, Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Historically, the city has not utilized investments as a tool to maximize the benefits of our revenue streams. Uh, staff would like to approve and recommend approval and adoption of an investment policy to allow, uh, staff a framework, uh, by which we can begin to generate additional funds based on the cash flow needs of the city. The city is governed by, uh, state law on the types of investments that are appropriate for public funds to safeguard these assets. The Finance and Administration Committee, Council Committee, has discussed the need for this policy at a recent meeting. At our last meeting, a draft policy was presented to the committee for review and comments. Uh, staff does recommend approval and adoption of the city's investment policy.
Uh, this is under the Finance and Administration Committee. Mr. Fennel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as part of the finances in the city of Smyrna, we, uh, are proud of our stewardship and our, uh, incredible record over the years with my two predecessors as chairs of the Finance Committee. And, uh, I was stunned to learn that we didn't have a policy that allowed us to invest some of the proceeds that revenues come into the city. We hold in a non-interest bearing account and I think that we ought to allow the staff and, uh, our, um, approved policy to guide on using some of those funds in an investment, a very safe investment portfolio that will, uh, inure some additional, uh, interest and revenues to the city on funds that they, we, we have being held in individual accounts. Uh, we're very cautious and, and careful, but we believe this policy will allow us to, uh, earn some money into the city account and I move approval of, uh, the city of Smyrna investment policy, 2019-119.
Have a motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approved seven zero. Item C, 2019-115, authorization of a contract extension with Zaxter, Inc. for bike share program services until March 20, March 7th, 2020, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Zaxter Incorporated is, is offering a one-year extension to the contract that expired on March the 8th of 2019. The change to the contract will be a new reduced price of sixty-two dollars and fifty cents per bike, per month. Uh, that price is reduced. of $62.50 per bike, per month. That price is reduced from $120 per bike, per month. Staff requests the authorization of a contract extension with Zaxter Incorporated for the city's bike share program to extend until March 8th, I'm sorry, March 7 of 2020. And again, staff does recommend approval of the contract extension.
This is under the committee Parks and Recreation. Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I don't know if there's anybody that has questions or about it, or I guess. So, at this time, I'd like to move to approve item 6C, 2019-115, authorization of a contract extension with Zaxter, Inc. for bike share program services until March 7, 2020, in the amount of $15,000.
Have a motion in a second.
Second.
I got one up here. It's a weak one, but sometimes we can't hear. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 7-0. Item D is 2019-96, approval of no parking signs along the 1600 block section of Corn Road. Ms. Jones?
Based upon site observations, large vehicles are parking along the 1600 block of Corn Road between the intersection of Corn Road and Junko Drive and the westernmost dead-end roadway section. This, the result of these large vehicles is causing extreme damage to our existing infrastructure and creating safety concerns. The city engineer and the police chief have evaluated the area and recommend the installation of no parking signs along the 1600 block of Corn Road.
Ms. Bluestein, I think that's correct. Ms. Bluestein, yes, ma'am?
If you drive down through there, you wonder why we need the no parking signs, but by the time people throw mattresses and other things, and then park 18-wheelers and school buses and you name it, there's no way that a police car or a fire truck could get into the property that they need to get into. So, this is a move to try to shift the traffic a little bit, I guess, or the parked traffic. So, at this time, if there, if anyone doesn't have any comments. No. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve 2019-96, approval of the no parking signs along the 1600 block section, section of Corn Road.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approved 7-0. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item made is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, we read the consent agenda. I understand, we may have a item that we want to pull out, but go ahead and read the consent agenda for council's approval.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Approval of the March 4, 2019, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the March 4, 2019, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the February 14, 2019, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item D, approval of the February 28, 2019, committee of the whole meeting minutes. And item E, approval of use of council chambers for Vinings Forest HOA meeting, Tuesday, April 16, 2019, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
All right. I hear most approve the consent agenda.
Can we pull one item out?
You can sure ask.
Okay. I would like to ask if we could remove item 8A. No, not 8A. I'm sorry, 8C, 2019-86.
Let's do this. Let's just vote on A, B, D, and E.
Okay.
And come back to say. How about that?
Okay. Thank you.
So, if I can get a motion just to approve A, B, D, and E. Is that right? A, B, D, and E?
Thank you.
Did we get a motion? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please vote.
Didn't matter anybody.
Right. It's approved 7-0. Item C, 2019-86, approval of February 14, committee of the whole minutes. Whatever the pleasure of the council is on that. Table it, or just vote on it, or whatever you want to do.
I would like to move to table item 8C, 2019-86, approval of the February 14, 2019, committee of the whole meeting minutes, table to the next council meeting, which would be
April 1st.
April 1st.
Motion in a second to table this till April 1st. All those in favor of the motion? Pardon me?
Pardon me.
Six to one with Mr. Norton voting in the negative. Retable to the next meeting. Item 9 is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report except to say that the finance team is working on preparation of the FY '20 budget diligently, and thank you for the staff work.
Mr. Tim Gu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of quick comments. First, Campbell High School, excuse me, Campbell Middle School Foundation had a great fundraiser a week or so ago. It was called the Party Grosse. Councilman Blackburn was there also. Yeah, great event, and one of the key things is it just takes a lot of effort from our community to put these events together, which is, you know, intended to raise a lot of money for education purposes of our schools, and a lot of, again, a lot of parents, families, staff, put a lot of effort into making that happen. So, we appreciate that, of course. Two calendar notes. Campbell High School Foundation, the high school foundation, the golf tournament is April 29. Please come out and join us. Again, these funds go to pay for and fund education purposes at the high school. Pat Terry is playing this Friday. If you don't know, Pat Terry is a Smyrna asset, treasure legend, and come hear him play Friday at the community center. Be a great, a great event. That is it, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wilkinson.
I don't have anything tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, everybody, this Saturday, March 23, is Shred Fest. Bring your copy-paper-sized boxes to the Eileen Wolf Adolph Rick Center and shred your personal documents. For that, I yield.
Ms. Blackman.
Thank you, Mayor. As always, I'd like to welcome new employees to the family, to the Smyrna family. So, Rashad Knox and Eric Long, welcome to the Smyrna family. And then also want to share that there was a, for Women's History Month, the library presented the book Discussion on Becoming by Michelle Obama, and that was very exciting, very well attended by 22 women. So, I want to thank all of the women that did come out and attend and share their thoughts and their experiences, and also want to special shout-out to Mary Moore. She did a phenomenal job with that. And then finally, I just want to say thank you to all of the phenomenal women who came out tonight and support, you know, support of Smyrna's first Women's History proclamation. That was really great. And another wonderful, phenomenal woman who is sitting in the audience, and I'm so glad to see you, and that's Ms. Deanna Bombs, Deanna Bonner, and the former NAACP president. So, thank you for being that, being here. So, and with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrew Bluestein.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do not have a, anything to add this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Norton.
No report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Jones.
No reports.
Ms. Andrews. Mr. Cochran. Ms. Graham. Ms. Tina, who's been in control of the big machine tonight. We do not have a show cause hearing, citizens' input. We've got some folks that have signed up for that. Alec Bakri, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments?
The city had a contract with Tucker Grading for a small creek over at Lake Court behind the dog park. Now, they're professionals at doing the grading for $206,000. I noticed a Kroy truck sitting there every day for the entire project. I finally went over and asked them, "What are you doing here?" He says, "I'm an inspector." I says, "Well, you're an engineering company. What are you inspecting?" They knew what they're doing with the grading company. He wouldn't answer me. So, I looked at, found out some figures here in interesting captions. The first one, survey, $4,600 to the city. Design, $46,000. Designing what? It's a clear creek for the grading company. Eastman acquisition, $1,800. Construction administration, with the lighting in here, it's $20,000. And inspection, $97,000. A total of $171,000 Kroy billed the city. For what? You add the $206,000 to the $171,000, go over and look at that little creek and see if it's worth $380,000 of taxpayer money. The city paid Kroy last year $5 million in services. Coincidentally, in '17, Kroy was paid $5 million. We have a city engineer. We have a finance department. Why aren't we using them more? If you eliminate the middleman, you save $5 million. They're the program managers for a city of $5 million. We're equivalent to Marietta. They don't have a program manager. Why do we, paying $5 million, again, when you ask for equipment at the fire station? They got to go through Kroy. It should be going directly to the finance department. I find these figures outrageous that the city should address it. And I hope you do, because I find red flags all over this arrangement with Kroy being involved in every transaction in the city to come up to $5 million a year. And I find this to be no less than a scandal as far as waste of money and what's going on with Kroy, and I hope this council and city addresses this. I find these prices and charges outrageous, and no one's checking the figures on their billing. And I hope they do this from now on. But I do not understand, these figures had nothing to do with the project, yet design, survey, they're an engineering company. What, what's a survey? There needs to be some explanations on what is going on here. And these figures, I have shown them to the city administrator, if you want to get a copy of them, to be aware of them. But please, go over and look at that little creek and to see what we're being charged by Kroy. Again, time to eliminate the middleman and use, there's nothing our engineer can't do that Kroy can do and vice versa. We need to use those two departments much more, A to B, not having C involved. Thank you.
Laura Myers. I can't read the A in, it's sideways. Does, you know, we don't have an address here?
Yes.
Comments?
Yes. 2344 Old Spring Road, Smyrna, Georgia. And it's Laura Marellis, M-I-R-E-L-L-S, Anzuris, A-N-Z-U-R-E-S. So, my comments tonight are basically, you know, I've been involved in a lot of different meetings for the city of Smyrna, and I see that, you know, the city is growing. I lived in Smyrna back before I joined the Air Force, back in, like, the early 80s, and then came back here recently. And one of the big issues that I have right now is, you know, that we voted in favor of SPOS for education for the Cobb County School District, and they are under the assumption that Smyrna is finished growing. There's not going to be any more growth. We're not, they're not expecting any increase in the student population. So, they're not really funding any schools kind of in our area of Cobb County. And when I was at a meeting for the Smyrna Vision last year sometime, and the representatives from the consultant were there, and I asked specifically, you know, "We're planning all this growth. There's approvals for, you know, all kinds of new housing in the area. Is there any coordination being done at all with Cobb County School District so that they know that, hey, we're expecting the city of Smyrna and the surrounding area, the population to continue to increase as it has been?" And the answer that I got was no, you know, that they're a separate entity, this city is a separate entity, and basically, we have no control. And while I understand that we have no control, I did live in Sandy Springs for a while, and I was involved with the Sandy Springs revitalization in the early 90s. And what ended up happening, I don't know if you remember, when Sandy Springs was really run down, and then, you know, it started really getting built up. And then, because the city was doing things and not coordinating with Fulton County School District, we ended up with trailers on our playgrounds and in our parking lots, and really had to be reactive as opposed to being proactive when we see, we have an opportunity to be proactive in Smyrna. We see that the city is growing. We need to advocate for our citizens with the Cobb County School District. Okay, that's okay. That's all right. I'll be back in a minute. Okay, that's fine. So, what I'm hoping is perhaps the city could do some sort of, either make a, you know, some sort of connection with the Cobb County School District and advocate for our families so that they will hopefully, in their budget process, funnel some money down toward our section instead of all up in East Cobb for their building new schools and adding classrooms, because we need it here.
Thank you. Leonard Robinson, 1809 Teasley Drive, Sustainable Smyrna.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, staff. Leonard Robinson, Smyrna citizen, not that long, but I'd fallen in love with the city. Last week, I attended, me and three other members of Sustainable Smyrna, we attended a training called Climate Reality: How to Address Climate Change. It was a three-day seminar given by former Vice President Al Gore. Very good, 2,300 people, but what I was surprised at is Smyrna had two tables of citizens on their own time and their own dime to attend, to be trained in sustainability, environmental justice, and other environmental issues. It's a good point. They, they hadn't heard of Sustainable Smyrna, so we just picked up 10 or 20 more peop, citizens, registered voters, that are interested in sustainability for Smyrna. Again, Sustainable Smyrna, oh, one more thing. The entire city council from Charlotte, North Carolina, attended three days of training to show you their commitment in sustainability. Sustainable Smyrna stands by to work with the city, to put in a sustainability program that includes renewable energy, renewable-fueled vehicles, green business, you know, residential stormwater management, and anything that you want, but you've got a whole bunch of citizens that are passionate and now trained to work with you. Thank you for your time.
That's the last, oh, no, there's one more. Marshall Moon. Is he still on this list? Okay. There you go. Okay. That's the last person to That's the last person to, that signed up to speak. I, I'm reluctant to, as you know, this is not a question-and-answer period. First of all, Leonard, I didn't know anything at all about this conference you went to. I didn't know there was one, so I'm sorry. The young lady that talked about the schools, I will admit that I attended a meeting maybe two weeks ago at Campbell High School with the current school board member, Jahah Howard. It was a very good meeting. Unfortunately, we didn't get a lot of straight answers, not from Jahah. He did, he did great. But what the school board folks answered was sort of amazing. And I would tell you this, they are so far off on their predictions about things are gonna plane out, and there's gonna be vacant schoolrooms, that they are so wrong about that. I was amazed, too, at all the questions that were asked, that they got about a 10-minute answer that didn't answer the question, and that went on all night long. So to your point, yes, we do work with the schools. We, whenever we have zonings, we send them, I believe, a request or a notification that says, you know, this is what we're doing, it's just gonna have an impact on the school. I will say this, I'm not knocking the school board. I wouldn't serve on the school board for all the tea in China because I don't know how to fix the problem, but I promise you, their, their numbers are off if they think we're not gonna continue to grow. And so I would say you need to really get with your school board rep. Now Jahah Howard has done a great job. He went through three hours of a meeting the other night that was pretty, pretty hostile because I think they also feel that this part of South Cobb, this part of the county, South Cobb, doesn't get his fair share, so, okay.
And his predecessor, Smyrna Citizen of the Year, member of the
Susan Thayer did a great job, too. It's tough to fight to get what we're do, and I've always said this, I don't want any more than any other schools in East Cobb. I just want to be on the same level playing field. I want the same thing they get, so. Okay, with that, I declare this meeting adjourned at 9:13. Man. Are you going back upstairs? I'm not going back up there. I mean, are you going upstairs?